We have any followings, class? You may do it. Councillor Collins, Councillor Davies, and what do you think? I, Councillor White. Are we having to move exactly?
Yes, agree.
Does anybody have any declaration within the best?
Yes, um, the last one. Peter, into one more.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have lots of minutes. Point number three, to agree as a correct record, the meeting, the minutes of the meeting was a Tory council held on twenty second of May and tenth of July. Great, are we having to agree that?
I agree.
Agree. Point number four, interim minutes to agree as a correct record, the minutes of the interim council held on twenty fourth of April, tag nine things with June. Thank you. Number five, to receive the minutes of the planning committee meetings held, the thing held on the ninth of June.
Thank you, ma'am, is that the minutes?
Okay. Which were pretty, have you received those?
Yeah.
Thank you. Point number six, to receive the minutes of the council events committee meeting held on the fourth of June.
Happy to present, you see, I'll go to committee.
Having to receive?
Yeah.
Thank you. Seven.
Sorry, sorry. And there was wording, I wanted to check something for the minutes, if you don't mind. And so it was, I turned, oh, let me get the page again. So page four or five.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
The, with the ones from June.
Yeah.
Not the last.
No, I can't find a video on that, so I can't download anything. And so it's four, four, stroke, two, three, event reviews, it's a comedy night. I just wanted to make sure, because we did vote on this, so, and it is just wording, so it might be fine. And but it says that an agreement regarding the layout and fire safety has been put in place. I'm sure I asked for us to have sight of that agreement. And the next line under, and our own security will continue to be used for comedy nights as university security could be called away. I did check the recording, and we had agreed that when we were going to review the arrangements, which it says on the line below, that did include a security. So because we voted on this, and it says, and our own security will continue to be used for comedy nights at the university. I wanted to make sure that we were still able to review that part of it, because we did agree to review it.
What I'm going to suggest is that we meet on Monday. And that you, when we present those minutes to that meeting.
Yeah.
We, we discuss that in committee.
Sure.
Can't really change it here, because the committee isn't sitting.
No.
And we discuss that committee, and if you've got a note to the, where it is on the webcast, I'll go back and check it.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
And then I can go back and check it.
It wasn't there, so.
No, that's okay, because I don't, we can't do anything tonight, and it would be inappropriate.
Yeah.
So we'll do that at the next meeting, where we'll probably have another set.
Thank you.
By then anyway, so we can do a vote together.
Thank you, thanks, ma'am.
So I'm going to close question, is that a question asked and answered?
Yes.
Move on to the next one. To receive the minutes of the environment committee meeting held on twelfth of June.
I'm basically, we're seeing the minutes.
I'm not particularly agree.
Yeah. There were any questions?
Any questions? Starting down, Rob. Excellent. Number eight, to receive the minutes of the resources committee meeting held on the twenty fifth of June.
I'm happy to present this to, for council.
Received.
Thank you.
The receiving, number nine, the receiving question reports from Buckinghamshire Council of Councilors. Yeah. Councillor Stott, great on it. Yeah, councillor Stott.
Thank you. Um, yes, just to update that, what we've been going on, I think the key, probably what we're interested in is the right in schools. Uh, these academies have been following counties, uh, who understand, um, county, that means, and stop being direct impact on those bodies. So for instance, we're going to school, it's not really affected the academic side of it. Um, and I know there are steps also being taken by those schools.
And thank you. Any questions? Councillor Stott, great.
Yeah, quite normal. Um, firstly, um, to all members of the planning committee, the question which the planning committee asked to be, you remember the planning committee wrote to all Buckinghamshire councils. Come and discuss section one O six on two occasions, and the second occasion, um, not everybody would have the ten. The question which the committee asked is on the cabinet agenda tomorrow morning. Um, and that will be there, so we'll get the response which the town council wished for, or the response we didn't want. And we'll see what the cabinet members' response can be judged at. On the council side of it, um, I attended, probably last week, I attended education select committee. It might be worth watching the section round, um, well, the first section of the meeting is quite interesting. In the sense, there was a large discussion around what councillor Davies said about the, um, concrete. There was quite an in-depth debate from members, and quite a robust debate, I felt, around the, um, what it meant for Buckinghamshire schools. And were they affected? And how members in local wards doubt that they needed, um, to be quickly informed when a school was in their area. I think that's fair, and that's what's on the webcast, and it was interesting to listen to, and it was good to see that there was a robust question, right? They also, um, the report of the select committee, a report into special education need, that goes to cabinet tomorrow. And so that will, um, that report, I don't want to comment on the report, there's things that I would have probably said different, but that, that report goes tomorrow. And I also attended the same day, and there was elements around which we're interested. I will probably be bringing that to events. It's the, um, tourist economy in Buckinghamshire, how they done that. I won't prejudge what the discussion will be around that, but I think the report is robust and interesting enough that members should discuss it. Because it's, we actually invest greatly towards information and events have a, um, input in that, so that should come to you. But also a discussion, which I would suggest you go and watch on the webcast, around the planning and the Buckinghamshire plan growth. Um, the influence was given, and I think it's fair to say the influence was given, because it was actually in the meeting. Um, that sixty percent of the, um, developable land is in, is not looking green belt. I think that's the word which we used, which suggests that the green belt wouldn't be challenged. So you could read that as you wanted, or as you wanted to interpret it, but I would suggest that you, um, if you're interested in the Buckinghamshire plan and how it progresses. That you go and watch that webcast, make your own views around it, I've got my views about what's said. Um, but that is always good for other people to read that, and if it's something that is relevant, I'm sure the Chair of Planning will, um, bring it to the notice of the planning committee thereafter. I will be, um, asking different questions at council. I've already got three in, and I've got until about tomorrow to get four bits. Um, and I probably will. And, um, I've written questions to council around many aspects to do with, um, things that next year. There was, and on the going forward, um, just to let members know, you will be aware, this is going back to a panel issue. I have been in a constant email exchange around, um, the inability for applications to be taken to committee. And that exchange has been going on for some time with democratic service and legal offices. About the fact that, um, in some aspects in Buckingham, we seem unable to get a free member call in, which was more the town council wrote to ask for. I'm not sure quite where that goes, I think at the moment it's a little draw. Um, but I will come up with another, um, tomorrow, and I'll come up with something different. Um, but, um, I am concerned about that, and I do, um, feel that, um, this is something that we need to look at. I've also had two, since we last spoke, two, um, which were members asked to be done. And two member call-ins turned away, which is the public record, um, the, um, councillors who are chairs and vice chairs decided. One was, uh, an application within the floodplain, and another one was a, an, an application to do with a, in an estate in a septic tank. And I've been advised that maybe my rationale was not my rationale, but I think that'll probably come back to planning, because I do believe you, so the council, town council, planning committee also wrote on these things. I'm hoping you'll get your response, and I'll be guided thereafter through the Chair of the planning committee, if there's anything that you think, um, needs to be brought. I have written a response to one of them, I have a response to both of them, actually, um, but, um, but we'll see where that goes. I am concerned, because it is evident, and it's a fact, that I do believe it's a through, to the contrary, that no planning application in Buckingham, this is the parish or boundaries of the Buckingham Town Council area. Have been determined in a planning committee since twenty, late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty one. Which means all the planning in Buckingham, which is not a village, it's a town, has all been done by delegated past. But to be factually correct, large developments have gone to, um, to, and one adjacent development. And one other development in that time has gone to strategic development control. That was probably because they had to do with the, um, Vale Plan and the neighbour, um, and levels of changing the Vale Plan and probably had to go there. So we are all conscious of this, and I am, as a Buckinghamshire councillor, conscious of my, the importance of trying to assist and work with the, um, Buckingham Town Council. Where I'm appropriate on their neighbourhood plan, um, in the sense, there's only two options to make sure that I can support what you're doing. And maybe add as a, where it didn't have town council do it. So I do think that there's a lot going on, and we'll see how it goes forward, but I will not be finishing with the situation of the calling. I have already worked, like, what my next move will be. Um, because I will not pack up, because I think it's only right that members of the public, that the town council's voice is heard. On major applications and things that vet this community, because not to be heard is, um, seems to be somewhat undemocratic. And but, um, seem to be alone at the moment, always grateful for this store. So I think that probably, and one last thing, um, I did attend a briefing today on the, um, yeah, I shan't go into detail, if I attended a briefing on the A four two one. And I do believe that the council will be informed thereafter, so I think that's probably enough. If anyone's got any questions or detail, I'm sure I'll be able to carry on talking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you mentioned about anything coming from planning, um, that can go on to planning. I'm just wondering if the same thing could happen with the tourist information stuff, that would be discussed down there? If there's anything that's relevant to Buckingham or anything that we could use, could we perhaps have it on TC and the agenda at some point?
Right.
As we do fund.
I do, I will take that too. Um, I think it's, I've already circled out of the information to the office, I don't think it's anything that would maybe even be discussed, no, I don't think it's ever to recommend. I think it's something that we need to be informed about with members, because it fits in with the civil economy.
Yeah.
And as the town council spends a lot of money on it, it's only right that we understand what the other person in the marriage is doing. And for the way that we question it, I have put a written question in after reading the document myself. And which is my view, I'm not suggesting my view should be the town council's view at all, but I have.
It's not the information.
I've already sent a written question, I'm waiting for it to be approved by tomorrow morning. So, um, on my findings of the document after reading for it, seeing for the meeting.
So that's it, can I, I can make a little change on that?
Yeah, but just, we'll just ask councillor Stott to report, I went with that, residents' voice and honour and planning applications, because residents have those commenting planning applications online. And that's a different situation where they're officially determined.
So I think we'll have to differ there. Um, I believe the democratic process historically before, that in the district council, um, planning authority, um, it was not unheard of. Under the constitution, the district council, that one member called an application nearly went to committee. Um, the district council met on a more regular basis. Um, the district council meeting used to go on all afternoon, way into the evening, determining planning applications. And under that constitution, there was a more robust involvement of members in planning. Purpose of planning and the, the legal purposes, yes, they are considered, I will not dispute that. But what they are not considered in a public forum, in which there is a debate and exchange, and members of the public, all the Buckingham Town Council, all the, all the applicants. Or any other guest of interest has a chance to comment on the application in a forum, so that doesn't happen. So that is a public record and absolutely correct, yes, they are, information is on the website, as long as it stays there. It actually gets deleted off the website very soon after the application has been determined. So it's not a free, whatever, if you want to keep the information, you have to screenshot it, and you have to keep it, because it very soon disappears. So what I'm saying is, things aren't as they used to be. And, and when so many applications are determined through delegated powers, um, many things that are important to our constituents. I'm not heard at a planning committee, and have been so for such a long time, there is deficit there. Uh, it's an actual fact, the reasons are all legal, but you're given through planning terms, while they can't, they won't take them, can they keep? But there's always two opinions about anything. And, um, my one is, only one is that to open them above anything else.
Thank you, councillor Harvey.
Oh, just a question, uh, the request that the link to the reports on special education needs is set, certainly is the whole council.
I'll do that.
And one that's going to be started about important statements, this, and you can send the link around.
I mean, there is, thank you, councillor Harv, with that, I will circulate that, um, tonight. Um, and the report will go to Calum Morris, it is for you about it. Um, but you will, one of the things I am, I have put a question in over is, over special application need to council. In the sense that I am concerned that there is, um, proposals to reduce the mass funding per se, um, nationally by twenty percent to special education need. I'm aware of the hard work that Buckinghamshire council has undertaken at this point in time, to actually turn around special education need, send, and everything. I'm also just, um, in the process of being involved in a, in, uh, looking at autism. Um, and that is the early stages, so I'm well aware of these things, and, and though I might not be an expert on it, I read a lot. And I thank you for that, because I will circulate that, and I think it's, it won't be a commentary on it, because if Buckinghamshire council accept those recommendations tomorrow, in Paul Warren Park. That will be the, the policy that Buckinghamshire council have, but nothing is a done deal, and there are more challenges down the road. Um, which is why I've put a question in council, which, um, I think is accepted or will be accepted. Around the proposed changes to funding for special education need, which is incited by the, um.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, let's move on. And, uh, that is, of course, not appropriate for the reports, for the media, Buckinghamshire councillors. But from now on, I will be holding it, but very strictly to the three minutes.
I don't think standard all we can say.
It's a.
Say that with respect. But in your reports, what do you want Buckingham?
That's what I guess, that's what I just said, Robin, and it doesn't apply to what we've just had.
No, because you, because.
But it applies to everything from this point onwards, and it's, um, so.
But I think.
That's what I said, it didn't apply. Okay, my number nine, to set up a single meeting task and finish group to invite the King. We have a report from the town clerk, town clerk.
Um, for a brief date, so councillor Stott's proposed that we should write, uh, to King Charles and inviting him to visit the town. I've done some research on the best way to actually achieve, um, a visit, very in conversation with the city, who are the experts in this matter. I put the notes in my report, so I don't worry over all of them, but the basics are, we'd like to say please come to Buckingham and come and come. We need to put some sort of a, a proper bid together with proposal to fit in with the Palace's priorities. This is something I think would benefit from a proper sit-down working group, members probably invested. And the expert, uh, very helpful person from the left constituency is more than happy to come and attend that meeting, offer some advice, some things that have worked well in the past. Um, to help us better bid together, so the recommendations are fairly straightforward, um, just to get that from Robin.
Um, with you, that is a true.
Firstly, thank the town clerk for progressing this. Um, the reason I put this on here is, um, when I was fortunate to be in the position, which is a considerable, oh, yeah, um, mayor. Um, I, I met the then Prince Charles, and then, yes, the appropriate room to come and receive the Mace at Buckingham. It has close links to the Charles, King Charles, and he'd be the, uh, King Charles. So I really think I'd like to be involved in that, um, discussion, it's agreed, recommendation. I also think that after that meeting, we need to bring in, um, other artists, because I am aware that, that there are different interest groups in Buckingham. Um, that one being the University of Buckingham, two being the churches together, that's not, we must treat all religion equally. Um, and the churches together, to, once we've had that discussion, to ensure that we are inclusive and we bring other people in.
Yeah.
But maybe together, we have something which is worthy of the visit. And the main reason is, it might Buckingham, that's the.
Yeah.
Aspects of it, that having a royal visit in, um, in an early, early in the rain. But the last, the last time, I think, any, not memory of a royal person, I was in a pram. Um, um, apparently the train station was still, trains were still going at the railway in those days. So that was when the Majesty the Queen came to Buckingham, parked in the sign in down by Lemberley, which is now the university, and at the Trang Park, apparently. Um, inside in there, the Royal Parish, parked down the.
Point of origin. Her Majesty the Queen did come, and that would.
I know, my memory of it, I wasn't that councillor Ison saw.
Exactly.
Councillor Ison, that's my memory of it, I, I didn't say that councillor Ison didn't see the Queen, because I would never do that to them, but I'm telling you, my memory involvement was for the pram.
Definitely went in the pram then, were you?
No, I wasn't in the pram then, I was, I was tucked away neatly in a classroom in Buckinghamshire School.
Okay, quickly, one of this, it's fine, um, I can, and I to make a decision, you can discuss whether or not you saw the Queen on that visit.
I did, I did, that's what I would try to get.
Does anybody else wish to, uh, speak on this point, or shall we move to a vote? In which case, would somebody like to propose, well, I'm happy to propose that we.
And this, yeah.
Yeah. And saying goodbye, councillor Stott, great, all those in favour, please. That appears to be unanimous, thank you all very much. Thank you for suggesting and for progressing it. Now, number, point number eleven, the phone box, again, we don't report from the town clerk.
Um, not a lot really, to add to what is, is in quite a short report, um, development control, consulting again on the removal of the phone box. Looking at the information that they sent, the only four options we have to, um, oppose this is mobile coverage, which they are saying is good in the area. High frequency accident suicide location, and there's no evidence of that, usage, it's had thirty five calls in twelve months. So my opinion is that we accept the circumstances, being that it is five point two five miles to the nearest, um, other phone box. With no public transport or no way for somebody, it wasn't very much good to get to it. That is our, would be our only, um, option proposal, so the two options I put, the council is that we don't oppose, or we oppose all those plans.
Councillor, don't you?
Thank you. When this first came to council, um, a couple of years back, made the point of, if you've got somebody who is in a, an abusive relationship, who's controlled. He isn't allowed a mobile phone, if they have a mobile phone, it might be checked, probably be checked. Um, and, you know, when, when somebody is controlling another person, that is their contact with other people, with family, with friends, neighbours. It's people around them, they produce who they can speak to. If they, if there's, if this telephone box goes, then we're removing another thing that they could access, because, you know, literally it's there. Um, and that was my argument and my point back then, and I still stand by that today.
Thank you, councillor Harvey.
Yeah, Lisa's absolutely right. I mean, there are young people out there who might be being abused in some way, there are people out there, relationships, like, some suffering, some of the raised tributes. They could be not there for whatever reason, that can't have access to a mobile phone, and I think it takes one single line by the town, it's really, no. I think, you know, it says thirty five calls, but those thirty five calls would be really important.
Yes.
We don't.
Thank you, councillor Stott.
Thank you both for those points made, um, they're absolutely bang on. One of the things that we, quite rightly said, we don't know what the thirty five calls were for. If those thirty five calls were to report, um, an abusive relationship, or to disclose, uh, um, an abuse, where would they go to do that? If someone, having looked at safeguarding in the past and whatever, and, um, people who are being abused, very often don't know how to do this. And the idea that we remove the one point in which they can do that, I'm not suggesting that everyone who uses the phone box is being abused, and that isn't true. But, yeah, um, one person is one person to many, and there is nothing in the thing that even caters to that. I think the company has a duty of care, as a good, um, a good company, to, um, at least evaluate confidentially. And if possible, what is the nature of the use of that, and work with the principal people upstairs, that being the, um, police. And one being, um, Buckinghamshire Council safeguarding, and then to work with the child charities to find out confidentially, not the individual, whether they received calls from there. If they did, um, or we know that they are being used to that, that means we've got a problem, they're saying, and we can't have it. We lost the two by the post office, um, we would have been the better one to have left, um, some years ago. And, um, apart from it's ugly, it is a red, and it's not a nice-looking telephone box, I think that's not an issue if you're a person with problems.
That's a nice. Thank you, ma'am. And when giga clear, et cetera, have gone through the phone wires in the area. There's a lot of, a lot of businesses, and I believe the town council, um, uses, um, the internet for their telephones. Um, when that's happened, if there isn't a landline available, then this town could, could potentially be completely cut off. With, if the, if the internet is down for whatever reason, um, there has to be, um, a landline left. And, and the, um, the ability for people to, to use that. Thank you. Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, I'd like to propose that we go with option three point two, and if possible, add in the comments that were made tonight about, um, abusive relationships. Or a safeguarding, however the clerk wants to word, I'm happy to leave that to the clerk, um, but that, that's my proposal.
I would second that.
Um.
Okay, saying goodbye, that's all.
Can I just ask for you, and there that we include the comments from county papers around the fact that if we have that, they're going to be cut off, I think that's very important. Well, because all the other things can never explain, you know.
Yes, councillor.
I think it's emerging, so it's, yeah, that should be on there.
Absolutely, yeah. So that's lots of good points, and let's take it to the vote. We have a proposal to go for option three point two, all those are favour things. Unsurprisingly, there appears to be two in this, giving away this conversation, right? Really. Right, now in time, one bit back. Um, my place in the agenda, I have, uh, point number twelve, banking and petty cash, petty cash even, really conciliations. Uh, to note that the vice chair of the resources committee has signed the Q one banking and cash reconciliations as required by regulations.
Should I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
There it is.
So noted. Again, at point thirteen, support for Buckinghamshire Community Energy Grant Application. Agreed at Environment Committee to recommend to full council, that will vote to support Buckinghamshire Community. Energy's grant application to Buckinghamshire Village's Community Board. Comments, questions, or does anyone want to speak to the recommendation? Yes, councillor Davies, go suggest we make some votes. Okay, uh, all those in favour, uh, anybody wishes a conduct who moves to the vote, or do people wish to speak to this? Okay, in that case, that's a.
I'd like to propose then that whatever the decision of the council tonight, that we, um. Um, we're minded to the fact that this would be a Buckinghamshire Council member's decision. And, um, rather than create a lot of work, we establish what the decision of the community board is. Tonight, so that we don't create a lot of work, work which is unnecessary for the town clerk. Because I do believe that that decision is imminent and it will allow the town clerk to make a proper response to it. Irrespective of what we say tonight.
That's awesome, boy.
Yes, I was couldn't, I'm, I'm, it's what the council shop we said, based on the decisions could be by the council board. Um, I think that's, you know, I mean, it has been made, um, for that to show that's close soon. Um, and I'm just worried about us cutting this and making a request for something that. One less has been decided. But I think that's, that's my key concern, I should say.
That's a nice. And I don't know, we're making a request, I think we're now supporting the, um, the funding application. Rather than requesting any funding, we, we are, um, voting to support their funding application. Okay, thank you. Number two, clarify, this went to environment, um, obviously environment, because it is. For council to support the council or supporting, if that makes sense, it's coming here. I believe, and as some of our county councillors have mentioned, that the decision has either been made and. Or is being made and that the announcement is likely to happen over the next four hours, it's not that decision is. So I think what both, um, Robyn and Ade are suggesting is that rather than just saying, yes, I need to support this. This application, there should be a get out that says if the decision's already been made. That the market is more an application where we know that it's not going to happen, or it is going to happen, the decision has been made, but I don't think. I haven't explained that very well, it's only. Uh, I think I have, if I can try to summarize, please start. Yes, we are not making a request, we are supporting an application, an application that is being decided upon. Probably as we speak or has been, so that the amendment is that we're only supporting. Or that we're only writing to the community board with the council's support for this application. If for some reason or the other, the decision has not yet been made in the twenty four hours. So if in twenty four hours there still is no decision, we are resolving to write to the community board to support this application. And I think that's a simple thing, we think it's a good idea and we should grant this, I think that's all required. But it's slightly more foreign language in that, but that, and we're only doing so. If, say, by Wednesday, then there is no decision has been announced, does that, does that seem reasonable? That the spirit of what he was saying, yeah, okay. Uh, so councillor Davies, are you still? Um, maybe it's probably saying this, this amendment, or proviso. Anybody like to, um, second this? Yeah, okay, councillor Donoghue, so, uh. We moved to the vote then, those in favour of writing if a decision is not announced. In short order. Is, and any abstentions?
My name, because I've already voted on this in a different place and I think it's long, but we're here.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, two abstentions, and the rest in favour. Thank you. And now coming to point number fourteen, the BNDP scenarios and consultation. We receive a report of progress with the BNDP and the upcoming, upcoming even scenarios consultation. Yes, councillor, that's a point.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, yes, this is the Buckingham Labour Development Plan, we're working, reporting to the council. Um, as of this coming Thursday, we will have had seventeen meetings since January. Report notes that we are on budget, we are on time, and we're now moving forward to the point where, um. Louise, who our deputy town clerk, is recommending that members agree to running the BNDP scenario consultation. Between the thirtieth of September and thirtieth of October, this will be the first public consultation. You can see in the documents, all the plans have been drawn up, just very, very briefly, we put forward four scenarios. One is a southern extension to Buckingham, which could have three point two five thousand homes. Second is a western extension of two thousand homes. Third is a western and southern extension combined, which would be two thousand homes. And then the fourth, it's right out, from right out to the box, it's a satellite village. At White House Farm towards Thornbrook, which could accommodate four thousand homes. We don't need that many. What we're doing is we're overstating what we need, because we know the inspector, when we come to do the plan, will cancel this, that and the other. What we're being told at the moment by Buckinghamshire Council is that between twenty thirty three and twenty forty. We will need between five hundred and eighteen and eleven hundred and eighty four new homes. So what we're doing basically is just planning for every event charity, so we're not going to get caught short at any time. I'd like to play, pay credit to the working group, I'd like to pay credit to our consultants, Homer O'Neill, who really, really good job they've done. And to Louise for pulling everything together. So I'd like to propose that, um, as you can see here on your. Um, recommendations, it's recommended members agree to running the BNDP scenario consultation between thirtieth of September. And thirtieth of October. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot of money.
Thank you. Um, if we could also add, just thanks to Sheena.
No, we do. Um, councillor Sutcliffe.
Yeah, I'm happy to second it, but I, I read it through him, through chairman, through chairman of planning. Within those scenarios, one of the things which I was most impressed with early on, when we had the civic day. Was the. Way that we managed what houses deliver. Because the realities are that you will have to understand about any house, because we get nothing of infrastructure. I think you'll tell me I'm correct, and I haven't read it in there, but that's been part of it. Because without any development, we wouldn't be able to get a new secondary school. Um, we wouldn't be able to do anything with the highway, and we wouldn't be able to solve the integral problem of health facilities, primary schools. And many other aspects, including the twenty five year old request. For us to have an art leisure centre or an art centre in Buckingham. So without any development, we're doing that, and people need to understand that. Um, that is one of the bonuses, but one of the costs of having development or benefit. I think, I think chairman's going to tell me that that's included in it, if it isn't, we're going to miss an opportunity. If we introduce it late, I'm sure I'm right that it's there, but I couldn't quite see it. Thank you.
Indeed, it is all included in, in the documents in front of you. I'm, I'm obliged to councillor Donoghue for pointing out. That our town planning officers here, Sheena, I hadn't realised she was there, maybe, maybe you could ask if she'd like to add anything.
Would you? What, would you refer to my mind or your engine? Again, I would echo what, uh, councillor Cole has said, um, to all the members of working group who've worked immensely hard to get to this point. Um, I think, two things, just like correction, apologize, and councillor Cole, the figures aren't from Buckinghamshire Council. They are from the ACOM, um, report of locality funded for us on housing need in the area. Buckinghamshire Council has not yet been able to give us figures for, um, housing need, but nevertheless, that. Those are the figures, they've worked with information given to them by Buckinghamshire Council. Um, I think Louise and I would probably like to, along with the, the working group, like to stress, this isn't the plan. This is an exercise, almost in kite flying, find out what people feel about development and very much what councillor Sutcliffe was saying. Um, you know. Development means infrastructure, you know, so what is it, how much development are people prepared to take in return for, um, the infrastructure? Um, so it's very much just sort of, not quite an education process, but it's an information process. Um, people, individuals, residents will get information from us and we will get information from them. Um, I think the other thing we probably are going to be asking for, if you, um, accept the recommendation. Is volunteers for the events that are being planned between the thirtieth of September and the thirtieth of October. Um, because without them, some of the events may not be able to happen. Um, so if there are any other questions, either now or in the course, um, both myself and Louise would be very happy to answer them.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Just for you, Madam Beth, if we agree this recommendation that we built tonight, um, with the, the world isk. Um, information that we agree would be, uh, what, what's the timescale, putting that out on to social media? Go communicating it for all the assets we're doing, and yes, I think that most members should be involved in the. Consultation, if we are all involved in it, then it won't be too arduous on one or two members to actually do it. Um, so I think, and I asked for you, Madam Beth, a scale of when it is so we can get a. Running catalogue of whose valve on which day, so that it doesn't fall all on to operatives to be there on every occasion. And that members can do that. Also, a briefing note along the lines that you've said. Because what misinformation, miscommunication at an early signs of the consultation can define or misinform a consultation. And as you said, this isn't the plan, it's a consultation about everything. So I think we need to have a briefing note to make sure that we don't misinform. I think that's very important, to start a hair running which isn't true. Thank you.
Yes, that is, I think in the, um, the notes that Louise made, that, and any volunteers will be, um, provided with, um. It's going to be a quick sheet, I'm sorry, um, information that's likely to be asked.
And I think what councillor Sutcliffe is also suggesting is that. Dates of these things, if they're circulated, or if they're not in, uh, sorry, I haven't.
Um, and there are, um, second of October, Monday, the second of October, between ten and twelve, community premiere. Um, of all, so, um, Thursday, twelve of October, between four and six P M. A Swan, at Swan Pool, again, hot hot.
I think checking, I think those, if, in a relatively digestible form, will be best, I think, you know. I feel my powers of concentration are not something that I can remember easily. So is there any more, are there any more questions or comments? Or can we move on to vote on this recommendation? Um, I think, have, have we had a formal proposal?
I proposed it.
Yeah, you have, yeah, and, uh, councillor Donoghue has seconded it, so all those in favour, please. And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Would be any classes, they will. Number, point number thirteen, we have a motion from councillor Cole.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I'll keep you up for the rest of the evening. Just before I start, I would like to make this absolutely clear, because the public are watching, that this motion, that in no way reflects on Vedetto's lounge. Which is youth open this Wednesday on the old forwards M and S site. They've gone through the proper planning channels, they have now got their design permission, but they're still waiting for the signage permission. This is something different though. My motion says that noting that Buckinghamshire Council has already apologized to us for failing to notify us until late June. That they had delegated the alcohol and licensing permission, which was given in May to Vedetto Lounge. The council believes that authors erred in making a comparison between these premises and the same group's Aylesbury premises. Officers claimed the establishments were similar. They're not, they're totally different. The Aylesbury one, Rococo Lounge, has outside dining and is in the pedestrianized entertainment district. And outside the Aylesbury Conservation Area. So Buckingham one, by contrast, is in the conservation area, it's among town centre residential accommodation. And it's in a street used by traffic and on two days a week by the charter markets. The pavement is unsuitable for outside dining. There's no indication that author took note of Buckingham Labourwood Plan Policy E E four, which states that, quote. The introduction of non, of new non retail uses, i.e. food and drink. Will be restricted to thirty five percent of the sum total of the primary retail frontages into which Vedetto Lounge fall. Given the above, I propose that this council questions how licensing officers reached the decision not to send this to the licensing subcommittee. Which might be considered an abusive process, which could happen again with any future applications. As it appear, the officer's responsible have little knowledge of Buckingham and have its totally different characteristics to Aylesbury. That's my proposal, ma'am.
Okay, I've been stuck in that, ma'am. Is there any desire to speak or pose questions?
Respect and, um. Please may I know where this is in the planning process? I do believe that the licensing isn't something that gets it out by planning. I, I'm unclear, and that's my fault, um, where it is in the planning process. Um, as it, um, had a change of use, agreed or had it not agreed, I think it's important that we know that, I, I, I'm unclear. And that makes a difference on whether we can comment on it, um, and that's my fault for being unclear, I'm not sure where it is in the planning process.
Um, yeah, councillor.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, just to say that, um, it doesn't require a change of use, because it still comes under the same category. Um, under the, the new laws, after I started off in my address, they have met all the planning requirements, which include. It was design of the frontage and they're in the, at the moment signage is going through. So, as, as I say, they've done everything correctly, and that's where we are. The reason it's come here tonight. Because licensing is not a planning method, and we were deterred at the planning committee about this, so we answered to come before the council.
Thank you. Councillor Austin.
Um, councillor Sutcliffe has addressed that question.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sutcliffe.
Thank councillor, um, for his diligence on this. I just wonder whether. Have we approached the, um, questioning of the officer stroke, the, um, planning? What I'm unclear of, because, um, it didn't go to a licensing committee, as you often said, is. We need to establish what the process is, because, um. If there's a change in process of where these things go in there, making these decisions, as similar with planning. And the sort of delegated and not taken there, we need to establish that if there's a change of process, because historically. Most things, um, used to get for licensing and most big changes did. And I think if you, would be happy to include the words, to ask if there's a change of process, because if there's a change of process, we need to understand why. Um, because I don't think we were ever, I was never consulted about that change of process if it's taking place. It might be a erroneous question, but we need to establish that, because going forward. That what we run against the same thing, and they'll say, well, the process is X. I think we need to find out what is the process. Are you happy to accept some sort of words around that in it? Uh, I mean, you can choose your own words, not mine if you want to, because they might be shorter and briefer and all, whatever. Um, but, um, you can understand where I'm coming from.
And now, this motion was provided with a lot of due diligence done beforehand. The town clerk checked it out, we know what the process is, the process hasn't changed. We know that if officers decide they don't want to, um, send something to any committee, be it planning or licensing, whatever. They delegate it, and nothing's changed in that. And we did a lot of work on this, on getting this motion worded absolutely rightly. So for one, I wouldn't accept any amendment to it.
You, any further comments or questions? In that case, I think we should move to the vote on this one. So you're proposing it and councillor Donoghue is seconding, uh. It, all those in favour of accepting this motion? That is. Any abstentions? One abstent in. And there's some favour. Thank you. Agenda point number sixteen, we have a motion from councillor Harvey.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, yeah, I've all of, as well as the last one all round. It's one of the last one of all round, our entertainers, it's a C F O. Mate, I, I hate to remind you, but I think it's just a good suggestion. It's not in any way saying this is not legal, but this is, the people we talked about this. I think the first thing I want to say is that the motion that's on the agenda is not as such my motion anymore, because it went through Town Council, they came to the meeting. Uh, my original motion was amended, there we go, was amended, um, at the, uh, at the meeting and what you're seeing is the result of that insertion and it wasn't agreed by T C M. Obviously not the medical, we can advance it. Otherwise, we couldn't prove that right. Um, so, taking that into account. Um, but I, I would say that I am delighted to see the positive, um, response from the local Royal British Legion. It seems that they're going in a similar direction already anyway. So we're just, in a sense, going along with the vibe of that, because quite evidently, I know there's some examples there that, that have been sent to us of, of the paper poppies or carbon poppies that they're producing this year for people to choose as they wish. Um, they are using up an existing supply of plastic ones, uh, because that makes sense, but they are now moving over to the power of these places to paper ones. And I think they're waiting for a review of the other way. So how they're going to, uh, change their reeds as well, perhaps, with everything. And those of us who are older, who are a member, of course, will remember that the, the, the poppies were always made of paper and wire and cranking paper wrapped around and pinned together with a thick, that's how they used to be. Um, the plastic had obviously got put in, um, more recently. Um, so, for me, it's, 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 it's really, really good to see that that we can say, um, I think the question we've got to address tonight really is whether we pursue it this year or whether we, um, maybe leave it to next year. I've got that in a bit more seconds. So, um, let's say the one that's on now is just to illustrate what's possible. It's not saying that actually a version, um, at all. And just in case anybody could ask, uh, it's covered in the cellophane and cellophane is actually made of paper, um, and it is biodegradable. So that's not a plastic cover, in case you would want. So, let's see, yeah, and also I thought you mentioned Beck Street as well, as also said, she might be willing, um, to, to use that.
Right.
But I haven't finished yet, I was just waiting for you to finish the conversation.
Thank you.
Can I, can I carry on?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So, it's also occurred to me that we could invite, in future years, florists, artists, especially even school, school students as well, to create a pattern for the forthcoming year, have a sort of competition almost, I don't know, but certainly engage people in the process of creating a reed. And I have to say, it would delight me hugely when I look at the war memorials after the remembrance Sunday, it were decked out, not with almost identical wreaths as it currently is, but with a diversity of wreaths made in all different kinds of ways, all without plastic. And that, I think, would be a, a more fitting tribute, um, I think, to, to the people who, you know, lost their lives and, and, and lost civilianism and so on. Um, so I think we need to resolve now whether we pursue it this year. Um, or because the, the wreath has already been bought. It was bought back in March, apparently, according to what Andy said. So we've already got the wreath and we can use the wreath. Throw it away, we're seeing a bit churchish, probably. So probably for me, it makes sense to maybe adjust the, the motion so that we do this next year. And perhaps by next year, there'll be other opportunities and maybe other ideas from the Royal British Legion, um, as well. Um, and I think that's all I need to say really about it. And I hope that people will take it on board and simply, this is about enacting our policy of in a single-use plastic, and just simply saying there are other ways of doing this that are as respectful, of course, um, and uh, would be a, a new feature and not giving away on this, I'll leave it.
Thank you. Councilor Donnelly.
Thank you. And I was happy to support John's original motion. Um, so I'm happy to support this one, so I'm happy to second.
So is the amended motion? Ah. Uh, any, yes, Councilor Sturridge.
I'd just like to say, we, we haven't got the, um, the request of the meeting, but I will say that there was a long and elongated conversation around sensitivities of the British Legion around we must move at the pace what the British Legion wished to move at and we shouldn't impose something on the British Legion.
Yeah.
And I think waiting twelve months to move this forward carries on that, which was a decision of the committee to the recommendation. The re, it, I have to give credit to Count Harvey, he changed and blew with the will of the meetings, um, um, which was not accepted as the original motion, I think would be fair to say, and amended it to recognize this. I think it's, we are moving into a new world. Um, I expect everyone will be asking, you know, in five years' time, why didn't, why did we ever do it the way we did it before? But what we must do, I think, I think Council Harvey's deliberations at the meeting accepted and every member did, is that we must move at the speed of the British Legion and we mustn't be imposing anything on the British Legion. I think that was what came out of it and we haven't got the minutes here today. But my recollection of the conversation won't be far wrong. And that was how we came to it. And that was the tenure of why the amended, um, motion was agreed to come to here from the Events Committee. And I don't think it, there was anyone at the meeting of record memory who voted against that amendment at the meeting, if I recall. Um, and I would give credit to Count Harvey, how he, he accepted all the views of what everyone made and amended to the will of the committee, um, and brought this forward. I think that needs to be said, because we haven't got the paperwork for it. Thank you.
Councilor Ossie, welcome.
Yes, I'm, I, I'll echo, um, as a stockholder's recommendation for the committee, I think that makes a great initiative. Um, my concern, when we talk about plastics and paper, paper is made from trees. Right, I know a lot of us don't realise that, but the more we go to us paper as well, you know, we'll have to quite a lot of peace for that. Um, so there's going to have to be some balance at some point in time. Um, with regards to, um, the British Legion and their sensitivities, I think we should ensure that we've got their pace and we stay, stay in the moment. I think we should, um, and I, and I noticed that was done, which is why I said I called the condition.
Yep. Not in everything. I'm just having a sense I get from reading my hours that, yes, of course you want to, um, see, just get, um, gone. But we, we must not, um, take away this whole thing from the British Legion. It is theirs. And I'm particularly thinking of the idea of, um, having competitions with people designing their own things. And I'm thinking of the Commonwealth War, War Grace sites, where everything is equal. Um, everyone is equal in debt with, with war and I wouldn't want to see that feeling go. So I'm, I'm with you, but I think we need to let the Royal British Legion lead it. Okay, Councilor Marne.
Uh, thank you. I, I'm quite happy that Councilor Harvey has, uh, bent a little to the will of of the council and made some amendments. But what my concern is the first line about reduce single waste plastics. I think, are we looking at such small items, like dictating to the British Legion? When we're missing the elephant in the, in, in the, in our society, like, that, 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 that is a single-use item. We don't seem to, if you want to address really the issues, then we should be looking at things like vape in our, in our town. There, there are five million vapes used a day. A majority of them are thrown away. Did you know that only seventy percent of vapes are recycled? There are three hundred million vapes sold uh, 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 a year in this country. And the, the majority are thrown away. Now, if they're going to be recycling, we're talking about big stuff here, not as a a poppies, just attacking silly, silly stuff like those coffee stirs. We really want to look at the big stuff. Look at vapes. The, the amount of lithium batteries that are in vapes. If they're all recycled or not used, they could power five thousand electric cars. That's the stuff we're really talking about. We're not this silly, single-use plastic and attacking the, the charities that we do regularly, like the glow, glow sticks and the poppies. We, we, we seem to get sometimes arrogant on what we should and we shouldn't do and we, and we miss the, the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Um, yeah, thanks for, Councilor Marne. Um, just to remind, because Marne, that when not dealing in vapes, that they are a company and businesses that sell them, we're just talking about the Royal British Legion and the.
No, no, go ahead, hold on. The opening line, the opening line of the council is, uh, councillor Donnelly. Environment policy to reduce single waste and single-use plastic. Forget anything else, whether you're talking about the British Legion or not. You made a statement there, single-use plastic, vapes are single-use.
Thank you. So, since tonight, I think the problem of vapes, which I understand what you're saying and it is a big issue, but I think it's probably not within the remit of tonight's meeting. So, um, yes.
I don't think you missed the point again. I'll repeat, I'll repeat again. Your first line. The wrong policy to reduce plastic waste and single-use plastic. Take that into account. Vapes are single-use plastics.
Yes, okay, agreed. I'm happy to accept that vapes are not single-use plastics. Nonetheless, there is a motion on vapes on the agenda and therefore we are not in a position to just, uh, to talk about how we might reduce them. And then, Councilor Harvey.
Um, just to respond to your, um, um, yeah, I definitely agree with your age, because you're right, they contain batteries and plastic as well. Um, our policy concerns our use as a town council. I would hope that we go into part of Lake Town Council and anything else. But maybe there's anything we could take into that. Maybe there's something we could be providing for. Sounds like maybe actually recycling um, in supermarkets, but there should be some vape recycling. But any, any shop that sells vapes should also provide a method for people to go and bring them back and so on. So maybe we can do something on that. So before the motion, maybe on that, maybe we can do something. But we're focusing tonight upon our use of, of, um, of plastic and looking to reduce it wherever we can, single-use plastic. So what I'm proposing with the motion, if you're looking at it on the sheets, what's written in front of you, is fourth line down, where we say explore options to use non-plastic alternatives, I think delete this coming year and, uh, for the next year.
I'm happy to go with that amendment.
And I would say that, uh, the three lines up from the bottom, sense of going this coming November, just delete all of that, all to your. Yeah, because obviously in a sense, I didn't know when we looked to discuss this, that it had already been bought.
Yeah.
So it's already been bought. So, so this year we'll stick with what we've always done. Um, but let's look towards next year. And I, I wouldn't say we should be led by the Royal British Legion, but I think we should work in harmony for the Royal British Legion, because it is our war memorial, uh, after, we own the war memorial as a town council. And the town council, you know, was very involved in the creation of that, um, you know, many, many years ago, back in nineteen twenty, I think it was. Um, so, I think it absolutely worked in partnership with the Royal British Legion and its work and its response. And I hope that when he comes to look at this, um, on the, uh, uh, on, on the video, you'll see that's, that's something that we actually absolutely do. So, um, I hope we can move to a vote soon, but I feel that wants to say something.
Yeah, Councilor.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I, I agree with the, the motion as, as it's now been amended, but could I just remind members that Remembrance Sunday is not a Buckingham Town Council event. It is British Legion. They organise it. It's their event. And whatever we do must be with full blessing and cooperation of the British Legion. We can't go out on our own.
Thank you, Councilor Sturridge.
I think that we, that, and can I just ask that, I think for clarity, when people read this, um, if you read the motion without the context of the letter from the British Legion, um, the letter from the British Legion, which shows the level of cooperation and discussion which has happened thanks to the officers and thanks to, um, the proposer. I think if you put just the word in there, people could misinterpret it. And I think that the minutes should include the letter with the British Legion, because it explains that it's an ongoing conversation. Someone can't come back at a later day and say, you've assumed to put this on the British Legion, as the council holds saying, is that it isn't our event, it's a national event. And, and as a town council, we'd rather, um, work to achieve it and we don't run it. So I think that, that all said, I probably move to the vote.
Okay, so in summary, we're not changing anything this year because the wreath has already been bought. But for next year, we're working with the British Legion, uh, to find a solution for a less plasticky, uh, wreath. Again, I'm not suggesting we word it this way, but that is what we're actually, um, that's the proposal and it has been seconded.
May I just, reading out with the amendments, the members are absolutely clear. Do you want me to do it, Donald? Do you want to do it, or should you?
Uh, I'd like to, um, in, in line with our environmental policy to reduce plastic waste and single-use plastic wherever possible, this council seeks to work with the local British Legion, uh, or Royal British Legion, in line with the emerging of the practice and of those who regularly lay bracket plastic weeds on the war memorial on Arms Sunday, to explore options to use non-plastic alternatives, uh, for the next year. The town council review all options found by local organisations with an intention to steadily seek to reduce the use of plastic in forthcoming years to zero.
You think for this time year?
I just said for, for the next year. Yeah, we're just, that. We're not doing this year. This year we're doing the one, we're going. So just repeating, non-plastic alternatives for the next year.
Okay, okay. Yes, Councilor Marne.
Thank you. I think we need to be mindful of the, of paragraphs in the letter that the suggestions need permission from the Royal British Legion, the Hague House, to ensure that it does not infringe copyright concerns with the poppy logo. So we need to be mindful of that. We can't just make our own little private reads and not consult them. We, we, we can't be that arrogant.
Thank you for reminding us. Uh, I think that is, um, in contrast in the working with the Royal British Legion uh, and other organisations, so can we move to the vote on this one?
On the inclusion of the letter.
In a minute, yeah.
Yeah.
And the inclusion of the letter in the minutes. So with that amendment and the inclusion, sorry, don't hear it. I'm putting the entire letter in the minutes.
Yes.
That's what I was looking at least.
Okay, so in that case, uh, there's a proposal to put the entire letter in the minutes. Is that seconded? Yes, seconded by Councilor Davies. So let's vote on this amendment. Sorry.
I, well, can I say that before we did that, we all checked with Andy. He may, he may not have read it for that purpose.
It's in the minutes.
Well, it's in the agenda.
Agenda, it's a copy record.
It's a copy record.
Oh, did I? It's already a copy record.
Does he know that we're putting it in the holy record?
What do you?
He asked me to touch this. This was, she was going to attend.
Copy records are none do it.
All right. So I think we ought to vote on that amendment first. All those in favour, please.
Point on, or don't have a recorded one just.
Okay, recorded vote on this one for the, uh, for the, um, those in favour, please.
On the amendments, yeah.
So on the amendment that will include the letter in the minutes.
Looking around, I believe that.
Yes, the letter, yes.
Yeah. Okay, right. And then on the.
Was it, I was mentioning that, because, yeah, it's, you know, in, in, in.
Oh, sorry. Okay, abstention on the Council of the Burgs and, that, that vote you've just had is fully on.
On the.
Yes, in the minutes.
So we're good.
And now we're voting on the substantial motion as amended, uh, and read out a minute ago. And do you wish a recorded vote on this one as well, Councilor Marne? So all those in favour of, on the motion. So that is.
All councillors except for Marne, Elsa Bogan and Heatherington, I believe, or Councilor.
Yeah, okay. Uh, those against? Abstentions? So that's Councilor Heatherington, Councilor Ossie-Bogan and Councilor Marne. Thank you. Point number seven, another, uh, a second motion from Councilor Harvey.
Okay, um, sorry, me again, folks. Okay, so on Thursday, I attended the. Okay, um, sorry, me again, folks. Okay, so on Thursday, I attended the Civility and Respect Conference last time. We had Cal, we did, I presented, um, at the, uh, one of the slots of the annual edition and so forth. Very, very good conference, very good contributions, uh, from a variety of people. I think one interesting fact from the, from the conference was how many cases. Um, how many cases of, of, uh, code conduct breaches have been reported to the Shire Council in the last year? I think you might just know that in Buckinghamshire, uh, it's less than twenty. And a similar number in Mobile Keynes. So we're not talking about a vast number of cases, thank heavens, in that, in that respect. Because I think there are other counties where numbers are much, much higher. Uh, um, there is some research to suggest, um, that, uh, in terms of code conduct breaches in England, which is almost unique in that we know that you suspend councillors, by the way, and I mean, unique across the world. England especially has almost no enforceable standards. Um, there are about twenty percent of parish and town councils that are either actually or almost actually non-functional because of instability. In Wales, where there are sanctions, where councillors can be suspended, it's through. But what's interesting is, is this background in terms, in terms of this. So we're looking at smaller group cases, um, and it, but I think it's very important that when those cases come forward to the principal authority, the Shire Council, that they are dealt with in the best possible way. And of course, members will remember that we've had our own instances of this in the last, um, couple of years or so. Um, and that we were given sanctions which we had to implement. We weren't given any wiggle room to add our own sanctions or not adopt the sanctions really from the Shire Council, um, committee. Um, and we felt then, um, that perhaps, and I think we had discussion around this table, that really there would be an opportunity for the town council to give a view about what impact it had upon us and did upon brothers involved, who, who were subject to it, um, to say what they thought, um, you know, about the impact upon them. We then wrote to the monitoring officer, and if you recall, we got a reply back saying, we can't change anything. And we agreed that, I think, at a full council meeting, two or three meetings ago, that we would look at that again, make a suggestion option that we should, was replied, we were really, I think, happy with that reply, the monitoring officer. So there and I, Tata and I have worked together on this motion. Um, and what we're suggesting is we write back to the monitoring officer and make a formal request that the process for investigating, um, code of conduct breaches um, should be amended, um, as follows, that those who have a reasonable claim who have been affected by a prudent breach of the code of conduct should have a formal opportunity to contribute an impact statement to the committee before the sanctions are decided by the committee. So there's two stages in this process. Stage one is, has the person breached the code of conduct or not? Does it fall within kind of, you know, the, the man, the, the envelope of where the code of conduct lies? They will then make that decision. Um, and as we, as we all know, that process involves, of course, um, the complaints, maybe, some of them might want to be anonymous, of course, and therefore couldn't be presented. Um, uh, it involves the, the person or councillor, or councillors who's being complained about. Um, and then the committee makes that decision. If it gets that part, a lot of the cases of those twenty never got that part, by the way. Very, very few get as far as the one, the one we had. Um, if then they make a decision, yes, the code of conduct has been breached, what we're saying with this motion is that then the people, organizations who felt that they have been impacted or to, 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 but their, um, thoughts, concerns, feelings, whatever, in back to the committee so that those can be taken into account when that committee decides on the appropriate sanctions. That's all that the motion says. Um, and that's in line with how the law is practised. I can see Mark nodding his head, you know, that's, you know, often people are convicted, but before there's a sentence, there are court reports and public investigations and so on. So it was merely proposing something that's broadly similar to how law is conducted, obviously, having, as two as a lawyer himself. So that's all it says, so what it says, um, and I hope you will support the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Heatherington. Well, with my knowledge of the law, I think you might have a problem in defining reasonableness. Not glad.
I just wanted to say, I don't want to be pedantic, I did help Council Harvey with the wording. I don't have a personal opinion on this and it would be appropriate for me to support the motion altogether, in case that was mine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council such for me.
I understand the purpose of the motion, what I fear is the response, um, because what members will probably not be aware of is the Localism Act, which the Localism Act that got brought in post two thousand and ten, was very much worn down with the standards that were left to us to quarrel, I think. Um, I'll wait for it, where under the old standards code conduct, there was very much more rigid and, um, grounds to do all this stuff. So we are left with what the Localism Act, it also, um, we've mentioned localism, um, we don't hear that word now, do we, localism, gone now, hasn't it? Um, another word which has gone, um, but, um, but I do fear it will be challenging. And I'm not sure how, um, a town council can um, direct or request another tier authority to change it. So whether what we should be doing is writing to Standards and Constitutional Committee and ask them to consider this, because they're the only people who have the remit. I sat in the meeting the other day for reasons, because they were discussing, and, um, which is interesting. And apart of Buckinghamshire, it hasn't got a town council, um, high wick, and I liked to listen to the um, uninspiring, but interesting arguments against them having a town council. And I also heard all the figures that Council Harvey said about where it was, and what they tried to do is try to resuscitate, simplify discussion so that they don't exactly have a, um, a case. So if, if, um, I would suggest anything to make it proceed with the policies of the council, which, Buckinghamshire Council, which we're trying to ask to do something, um, we should be standing it, sending it to the, um, chairman of the Constitution Standards Committee to, um, to look at, because that's where it's going to have to go, um, for, and worthy of a search. Because it can't be changed by asking the council, it will come from that committee. And I won't mention the councillor's name, but he is a barrister and, and he'll look at this and I enjoy many happy discussions with him, lots of things, and we love arguing. Um, but, um, but I think that's where it's got to go, be happy to set them where, because otherwise it will just ask you where you want it to go. And that's the only place you can go, whether they'll agree to discuss it, whether they'll write back to us. But that, if you want to move anything, that's what it's got to do.
Thank you. Council, tell me you.
Thank you. Um, just to let, um, Council Harvey know that the, um, the organisation in the, um, issue that he was mentioning, um, did, um, did, did send in a statement. So they, they, there was an impact statement, if you like. Um, so that is something that the Standards Board are doing.
Okay, thank you. Council, go.
Thank you, Madam. Yeah, um, I'm just going to say I'm agreeing with Council Harvey's statement. We've, you've got to go from the top down, you have to go to Buckinghamshire Council, you don't go halfway in, go to a committee. We go to the council, it's up to Buckinghamshire Council then to decide who's going to deal with it. And this is what is here. I'd like to second this motion, please, and I'll just add the impact statements, as Council Harvey said, are so, so important. In my time on the magistrate's bench and sometimes in the Crown Court, it made all the difference between giving someone community service or sending them into custody by having an impact statement. And the case we had, I think, two years ago now, impacted on all of us. And, you know, so for instance, we have someone on the council who's considered to have broken everything by embezzling or something. We all get tarred with the same brush. And, you know, people say, oh, you're all a bunch of crooks on the council. So we have to have a say in any of these cases. And I second the motion.
Thank you very much, Council Ossie Goben.
I think, I say, if you don't ask, you don't get. Um, I don't see any conventional reasons why we should make this request, I have this of the motion. Um, I also do understand what the Chancellor's thought we're saying, and I'll see, I'll just write into Buckingham Council's attention the committee, um, and I think that will, that will cover all bases, but I am.
Thank you. Council secretary.
You're on. I'm okay with that, the answer, maybe, um, you support my slight amendment to it that we, uh, we are writing to the council by doing that, but we ask that it go to the relevant committee. Because that way it actually has, knows where, we know where it's going to go. And because the question would be, do you know what you're sending and why you're sending it? So that's why I was suggesting that, because of understanding some of the procedures reasonably well, not fully of Buckinghamshire Council and where it goes. I'm not saying I can control the outcome, I can at least go and listen um, to the outcome or add to it further down the line. So as long as you're happy to accept that, I can support it, otherwise I think it would just get arsed where you want it to go. In which case we're telling you where it should go, helping you where it should go.
That's all I think. I'm sorry, what's that?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, some kind of remark, so, um, just to address the points. Um, first, your point, I think reasonableness is sort of invented in law case law, there's a, what would reasonableness, the street belief, again. So I think, I think, yes, it would need some definition, I'm sure we would work that out, though. I don't think it's a, it's a law. Um, and if, and strangely, then the localism act, and so, I think they would have said that when they replied first. So I don't think that's, um, right, but who knows, that might get changed anyway, uh, with the new administration and so forth. Um, and so the hint was given, maybe I've read something into it, but the hint was given by one of the people presenting, um, is that there are moves to force to look at the standards regime in the future government. Um, because it's clearly not working as well as it might. Um, um, and I agree with you, Valerie, we can say what we want to, you know, it's, it's, we, you know, we're a, a authority in our own right. If we want to sort of say, this needs changing. Um, and I would say that, you know, although maybe there were some impact states and submissive councillors on the queue, we as a council didn't have a chance.
Notice the organisation.
We, you know, because remember the sanctions that were given to us were collective sanctions.
Yeah.
Hmm. So we were, in a sense, all actually being tarred with the same brush by the Shire Committee. Um, and I think that what, that's a little bit what rankled the most, I mean, really. Um, and they didn't know that we had social media policy, but there we go, nothing, let's start. Um, in terms of where it goes, Council secretary, I mean, I was leaving it to the town clerk to know, uh, staff. And it would be sent to either the chief executive and, but I think the attention law is a need for it. I don't think, I don't think it needs to be in the motion personally. I think we can rely on town clerk to do a professional job with this, we just need to pass the motion. And leave it to the town clerk to actually, so firstly, I don't think there's a need, I don't think there's a need for that. But that's, I would say this is voted on personally, this is voted on.
Yeah, are we okay to move to the vote on this?
Yeah.
In this case, all those in favour of the motion. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, we're making good progress, yeah? Which is good, because we've still got plenty of things to say. Uh, point number eighteen, the ECDI mission statement referred from the Equality, Community Diversity and Inclusion Group meeting on the eleventh of July to consider adopting the mission statement as Buckingham Town Council. Um, Council, do you want to say anything to that or?
Uh, well, this is a mission statement we came up with when we started working on the working group and what we hope to achieve within our town centre, within our town, should I say. And I think, um, there's no harm in applying this other town council mission statement.
Okay. What's the secretary?
If you agree with the words, um, and I think it's been very carefully thought through in the sense that, um, why wouldn't you want to look at diversity inclusion? Why wouldn't you want to do all those things? And why wouldn't you want to foster culture of certain friendship? Nothing in here which is defining delineable or, or citing an individual or a particular aspect. It's a general term of, um, um, understanding and, and, and at what point will you achieve this? That is one of the sad things about life. I'm happy to, um, accept this because it hasn't, it's not given a, a, a direction. It's just a form of words which I think most people reasonably would want to live, live up to in any case. So I don't think there's anything contentious about it, and I'm happy to second it on that basis.
That's all I think.
Thank you. I've seen mission statements before in so many companies, as you walk into the offices, have mission statements. For whose purpose? What are this, what purpose are they serving? We all know what, what's the, in this, uh, mission statement. It's in the Equalities Act twenty ten. So our, all, all I see in this is a sort of feel-good factor for the group to put some few words, which is, which is not going to serve any purpose in changing anything in this world. This is like the Hippocratic oath, but the, but the doctors and things, uh, doctors, they're still going on strike. Don't be meaningless, means, means, means nothing.
The doctor's been on strike, it's got nothing to do with Hippocratie, it's actually your, your Human Rights Act, which actually empowers them to go on strike, they're not able to discuss your Human Rights Act. And that act admits in the, the law, they're not, when we agree and agree, that what they're doing is not illegal. And, 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 and it's not against the Hippocratie. If that's something that, um, other people in Westminster discuss to the nth degree, that isn't something that we'll discuss.
Yeah, just very slightly jump the order, yeah, give Council Arne the opportunity to respond.
Um, yeah, I would just like to say personally, I think there's nothing wrong with feel-good factor. If people can read this and feel included, unwelcome, no matter where they're from, you know, whichever, um, group they identify with, then what's wrong with it? You know, we're not, we're not, uh, singling out certain groups here at all. It's, it's a kind of welcome-all type of policy. Yeah.
Thank you. Council Ossie Goben.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm actually not focused on the mission statement, but I'm just looking at the wording, thinking how this is going to be adopted by the town council. I can see we're talking about a visible and voluntary working group in there. I don't think we've got a capital, so are we going to amend this now to ensure what we're casting is what will be reflected? So I think this, this, this phrase has to be, has to be worked on.
Thank you, yes. Um, helpful to you.
Thank you very much, Madam. Um, the, I, I support the motion wholeheartedly. I will say that the Hippocratic oath, though, is, although if it is broken, you are sacked. Um, you lose your licence as a nurse, I just want to clarify that. Um, but also nurses in this country are also operating at a limit when they go on strike to, um, to be safe and, you know.
Thank you.
This is what.
Nurses don't have it.
Let's move back to this point, though.
Yeah, let's not get ourselves into, you know, strike.
Yes, and you said.
Um, I would say that, yes, there is the Equality Act, and this contains and effectively is, is, is the, the, the philosophy of the Equalities Act and so on. But if any, I'm sure all of us at some point tried to read an act in Parliament, they are not the most easy to read things. And they, you know, some, 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 some laws, and some references to some other reason, I'm trying to look at the problem of the years, they're not readable. This is a clearly written statement. I think I agree with the councillor, Asavogan, it does need a bit of tweaking to make it appropriate for the town council. And maybe absolutely something we can refer back to the group to do that. Um, but in terms of the power of having a mission statement, one of the stories I've always, I've told many times in my job. Um but in terms of the power of having a mission statement, one of the stories I've always I've told many times in my job in terms of leadership and organisational change, is I heard a story once, everybody's sharing this from the end of the day, of course. It's a five hundred thousand billion, my uh to secure each of the many being built in Oxford, so let's celebrate that. It's good news. A lot of jobs in in Oxford are based on that, I'm sure. People here work there as well. Um but there was a story in British Leyland, when it was British Leyland, where someone was walking around, supervisor, um saw what this chap was doing on a car, I don't know, screwing a nut into the leg room, I don't know, something like that. And he tapped the guy on the shoulder and pointed to the mission statement. And the guy went, okay, nodded, and went back and did something different. So mission statements done well really can have an impact on people. Um and I think this is the beginning of one. I think these are a bit tweaking. I think we refer to the town council. But let's affirm yet again that as a town council, we are doing everything we can, and we should always do everything that we can to make everybody in the town who works, lives, plays, studies, visits here feel welcome, honoured to be a part of our community um and have no feelings of any kind of, you know, otherness, as it were. This is what this motion is essentially all about, and I wholeheartedly support it. I think we should agree it, but also refer it back to the to the to the working group for a bit of tweaking to make it a mission statement for the town council.
I'll agree something, babe. Um I can offer up two options. I'm perfectly aware that I haven't noticed that one lately, maybe right. Probably should have been stopped and tweeted before you got to this point. I can offer two options. One, maybe right now, where we change the opening line to Buckingham Town Council's mission is and then remove voluntary working group and replace that with active town council. Or otherwise, I would say it needs to be referred back.
That's it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna check whether we could vote on this and and thank you for clarifying that we can't. Um if it's gonna go back for tweaking, then I would suggest that it goes back to the group first. Um and, you know, we don't vote on this, or we can't vote on it if it's gonna be tweaked, so um so that we don't spend too much time tonight going over words.
Councillor? Um I just want to say that I think the simple tweaking as done by where would be sufficient in this case.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great. Councillor Secretary?
Yeah, I'm also gonna say that. I think that if anyone, I think we are for the council. They recognize the Equalities Act, um anyway. And if we haven't recognized the Equalities Act, it's very good read, arts fitness. And um and um and I really a lot see where I can find some interesting points of challenge. Um um it's very useful, it's legislation, why we still have to.
Councillor Martin?
Uh thank you. I'm still against this mission statement. So uh councillor, as our councillor Harvey said, that we're going to include everybody. Does that mean before this mission statement, I was not included? I was included. I was treated with respect with everything that says in the mission statement. Nothing is going to change. People are going to treat everybody else as they should do, regardless of whether they read the mission statement or not. So as far as I'm concerned, is the mission statement now going to change our view from what it was yesterday? No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Um two points, really. Um it it's it's a bit like this where I can read this as an internal uh thing for us and how we want to behave. And as we want to explain ourselves and what we're trying to do to the residents. We know this already, so we hardly need it. To go outwards, though, is this drawing, if this is going to be the mission statement for Buckingham Town Council, does it draw far too narrowly on what a mission statement across all the things we're doing? Because it's it's rather specific. When you actually pare it down, it's quite specific. And it's perfectly reasonable as an aspect. But I think if we're gonna make mission statements, then we really ought to be looking and thinking a bit more clearly about how broad it should be.
May I quote, um my understanding of this is that this is our ECDI mission statement. We've always been tied to this.
Yeah, so so we're gonna have several mission statements with aspects of our lives.
We could consider that in the future, but this one was specifically for the ECDI.
Yes, I think, thank you. Um we did just agree civility and respect um thing as well, so that kind of encompasses like help treat other people and, you know, be treated. So we have just adopted that as well.
Okay, councillor. Uh I just want to say that I disagree with councillor Rob, because I feel this is very broad, because we haven't mentioned, you know, groups individually in this. It is kind of all encompassing.
So I think we've heard from pretty much everybody now. My suggestion would be that we move to the vote. Uh Tom Clark, would you mind reading out again the uh the way it's been amended, the wording, please?
So I would suggest Buckingham Town Council's mission is to create an inclusive culture where all forms of diversity are truly valued in our town. We believe identifying ourselves as a visible and active town council is vital amidst the daily challenges we face. We're committed to fostering the inclusive culture in the way we treat and perceive all differences as an integral part of our history, culture and identity. Excuse me. Our aim is to create a Buckingham where everyone feels safe, supported and a deep sense of pride, passion and belonging.
Okay, I believe councillor Ahmed has proposed that we adopt this as a second, a mission statement for the town council. I'm happy to second this, and I would suggest we move to the vote. So all those in favour of adopting it, please. Next. And sub seven? Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Accessions? One, two, three. Any against? Thank you. Now we are, I think the next one should be much better. Thank you for all your contributions. These are important discussions. So we are, that's point number nineteen, we are asked to note the external audit. I think the comment is none, wasn't it? So I'm just going to use it alone. Very happy on point. Twenty, new cemetery and allotments revised plan, a report from the town clerk. Um of the main points.
Yes. Still, I'm not sure if I know that everyone's been really engaged in, so I won't call you all by going over it in huge amounts of detail. We had a consultation. We've got good support for building a new cemetery. The public brought to the cost. So we went back to Environment, who have done a lot of work on this and changes that we can make. Um and the decision is made that we will press ahead with a phase one development at this time, which is considerably reduced in in costings. And again, all the costings are listed there, listed there. It's obviously one point two five million. Um they've done all the background work for this through Environment, looked at the best scope of the plans. And we have basically pared this back now to what we believe to be enough to get us a good working cemetery up and running, so that we can start with, when our cemetery runs out, we'll be able to continue bearing people within the town. The costs on this at the moment, with existing budgets that we have, um the last calculation that I did would be an increase to the precept of two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight pounds, which is significantly less than it was when we presented it. So I think last time it was seven point two percent increase, and now we're looking at more point two two percent of an increase. Um it's um not insignificant. There is a possibility that by the time we've gone through Public Works Learn, that the interest rate may have gone down. In which case it might be that it, we don't need to increase the precept at all. It may be that it's gone up and we need to increase it by slightly more, but these are the biggest. We can only work on the biggest that we have there.
Yeah.
Um I think this is a good compromise. We should have listened to what the public proposed. We did a consultation. They proposed what they wanted. We've gone back and listened to that and we've consulted again, very much going on the lines of, we listened to what we said. We want a cemetery, we just didn't want that that increase at that particular time with the cost of living. Um so recommendations we push forward with the the costs as listed in four point one.
Councillor Secretary?
Happy to support it. One question. When we pre-accepted last year, um we pre-accepted within the preset on the aspiration of what we thought it was going to be, we thought we'd prefer ahead. I'm sure we would say yes, that we factored that into this calculation of the increase. Be it smaller, because that would have reduced what it would have been. Because what we were looking at at that point was a larger portion and the borrowings were higher. So I'm presuming that's factored down to reduce this lower thicker. Not to agree, this would be really silly because we would have wasted the money that we're going to agree to pay to build it, to buy it, um or have agreed to buy it. Um so it's just that question, really, and then I suppose we agree.
Um that's all. I understand your question. So we pre-accepted last year. We always had budget line. About the last four ideas, we've had a budget line looking forward to potentially paying back the public works loan board. But we have used that money throughout and uh we, as noted, um pre-set. We changed the name of that budget line for cemetery's development to reflect what we've actually been doing with that money. We pushed for planning costs and actually been using some of that money towards keeping our current cemetery running as well. That cost and all of those costs have all got their way at the point that we started the project. So that money will be redivested.
Yeah. Councillor Articola?
Um thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to thank the committee for listening to um the residents. I know this was a very, very fellowship, um pretty crucial, I've been, you know, very happy about. Um I think what we have here is something that we've done very well with the residents. I'm very, very happy to support this motion.
Thank you. Any further questions? We're gonna move against the base.
Um yeah. As we have recorded, though.
Yes, yes. Okay, are we happy? Are we all happy to move to a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, those in favour, please? And what?
Unanimous.
Is unanimous. Right.
But please don't anybody books likes in there.
We're not saying you're voting, yeah? Right. Point twenty-one. For men uh for members to note the link to the E L U H C consultation. This is a very long consultation, which closes on the nineteenth of September. Members are invited to add their own comments and there is a link there. And it stands for nationally significant interest. No, it doesn't stand for that. Anyway, um are we happy to note this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I just, I'm basically attempting to respond on behalf of the panel committee to a consultation of delegated um planning. I kind of lost the will to live about third of the way down. Uh and I've given it back to Catherine, so I've gone as far as I can, Mark can do the rest. Um he hasn't responded yet, uh because we knew that we would look at it. Um but can I just say, what I'm reminded of is a yes minister, where you always look at the bottom um of the of the of the ministerial box. So if any of us do this, I would suggest you work out from the bottom. Because a lot of people put the really controversial, difficult stuff at the bottom of the consultation, no one else. The don't use the ones that live.
Thank you.
And and and, you know, this really, I know, is so delegated.
Okay, point twenty-two, uh to review and discuss the action report. Councillor Secretary?
If to ascertain for the record um where the town clerk thinks we are, or if there's been any communications on the cycleway um along the railway walk section which belongs to the town council, and are we aware of um of the council made any contact, um any discussions with the park landowner of the land? And observations, which is not a town council matter, the land isn't in our ownership yet. Remember, we're aware that the road to the, it's not our responsibility to interact with it yet, but there is a um issue with the um that they have, they cut the um walkways from the estate to the to the right place. It doesn't look like it is.
That's a common one, that's disgusting, confidential.
Well, I'm not asking you confidential, I'm just making it clear. So I'm not going to talk about it again then, so. But just to say, have we had any contact, which is third point, which is to do with that, confidential.
On the cycleway, no, I haven't.
And that's only for the arch. I think there would be, would be that, yeah.
The other part of the negotiations, the barracks.
No, I'm not going to go into that, but I'll just tell you about, have we had any contact? We haven't had any contact from Buckinghamshire Council, which is unimpressive.
Any further comments or questions on the action plan, on the action list, rather? Yes, no, the willing?
Have we had any um updates on the research going on the Buckingham Axis Borough?
Long, complicated story. The actual origin of the money is unclear. The deputy town clerk has been liaising with the former chair of the resources committee to have a look back into exactly what's gone on now. So at this time, I don't know. It's turned out to be slightly more complicated than expected, but we will look back on some issues.
Any further comments or are we back between what we're on in this case? Uh point number twenty-three, to note the report of, or to note the minutes of the Buckingham Youth Club of fourteenth of July. We're happy to note those. Uh point twenty-four, to review the climate emergency action plan. Any comments, questions? Councillor Secretary?
Just saying that this goes back, so that anyone, what this goes every committee. And if the committee monitors its errors within the climate action plan. So I don't think there's any specifics that isn't being progressed. And we report our thanks to the um operator Nina, who who keeps us updated with this and brings it forward to the committees. And I think it's well worth doing it because she's just doing good job about making sure that we keep it forward, progressing things at a gradual way. Um um and it's important to keep that because if she did it there, we probably wouldn't progress where we are.
Thank you. Right. In which case we are. Somebody's sleeping. That's certainly not me, someone. Uh number twenty-five, to receive a list of events accredited by the mayor and the deputy man, you must stand there. And then point twenty-six, chairs announcements, of which there are none. Twenty-seven, date of the next meeting, the next interim council is on Monday, the ninth of October, and the next full council on Monday, the thirtieth of October. And are we happy to move into private session?
I would be very.
Yeah.
Very.
I think so.